Welcome to another edition of Lakeville's City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their June 17, 2013 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5B, Liquor Department 2012 Annual Report. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is liquor manager Brenda Visnovic.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. This evening, I'm here to present the 2012 annual report for the liquor department. Now, we've had a mission statement for years, and we amended it slightly with liquor committee approval. So our new mission statement states, "In partnership with the community, Lakeville Liquors is dedicated to serving the community through the strict control and responsible sales of alcohol. We encourage moderation, observe regulations, deliver quality service, promote community involvement, and provide financial benefits for the community." So that is our mission, and those are what we strive for. Biggest and foremost is always controlling the sale of alcohol, extremely important to us, and that's the reason that we originally went into business and the reason we, primary reason we continue today. So some of the quick statements that we make is anyone entering the store must be 21 years of age or older unless accompanied by a legal parent or guardian. We do not serve to anyone, no matter what they're purchasing, if they aren't 21 years of age, so no soda, no ice, etc. We work closely with several civic organizations, including SAD, MAD, and MOFAS. We have great partnerships with them, and we continue to contribute 18,000 to the chemical awareness coordinator for the schools. So it's a wonderful relationship as we try to kind of represent the terms within the community. So we have some sales recap information, and things look pretty up for the year. Our sales were 14 point, or excuse me, in 2011 were 14.4 million. This, in 2012, they were 15.2 million, representing an increase of nearly 6%. Also up was gross profit. That changed from 3.5 million in 2011 to 3.8 million. Also increasing was the gross profit percentage up to 25.2%. Now, that doesn't mean we were more expensive, that means we purchased better. Lastly, operating income was also increased from 1.3 million in 2011 to 1.6 million in 2012. That's net operating income before expenses. With that said, I do have to tell you there's something that went down, it can't be all up, and that would be our expenses. They went from 1.3 million in 2011 to 1.2 million. So that's a decrease of 4.2%, and I would especially like to recognize Tom Nesseth in the Finance Department as he played a large role in negotiating some really great credit card processing fees for us, and that was a large part of that $100,000 reduction. Again, our involvement is out, is much more than just within the liquor store. We like to do a lot of philanthropic endeavors. So Taste of Lakeville was once again in 2012, as it was in 2013, a wonderful event. It's our biggest event of the year. So it raised about $11,000 for the Rotary in 2012. We coordinated over 400 wines. Summer Splash, which I must say is coming up here July 27th, shameful plug here, but last year we raised nearly $10,000 for the Heritage Center. Couple changes last year, we conducted this event at Branch &amp; Farms. They were kind enough to let us use their facility. Now, this year, this will be held right there at the Heritage Center. So tickets are available now at City Hall, at the Senior Center, through Yellow Ribbon Members, and as well as online. And we also help coordinate the online auction. It's a benefit online auction that raised 9,934. This auction will be held again this year, coming up in October, about the middle of October. Moving ahead, taking a look at where we're at today so far, and this is only through May, but I only get this one opportunity until the end of the year, so I thought I'd take it now. And sales through May were up 160,000, which is an increase of 3%. Now, this is truly remarkable considering that in those five months, we lost one full day of shopping compared to 2012, that should have stated, and weather is definitely dampening the spirits. The golfers, we need the golfers. Customer counts, again, sales are up 3%, customer counts are up 3,300, which is an increase of 1.4%. So obviously, if sales increase higher than customer counts, we're obviously dealing with the depressed golfers and making them purchase more while they're in the stores. Moving ahead again, some things that we've already done this year. We hired one new store manager at the Kenrick location. We re-roofed the Kenrick store, which is really beneficial considering the weather we've had, and we conducted a fundraiser for the fire department in which we raised over $5,000, and we were able to assist them in purchasing four AEDs that will be used within the fire officer vehicles. We also coordinated wines and raised over 8,000 for Taste of Lakeville and the Rotary. And as such, well, this has really nothing to do with Taste of Lakeville, but I was recently elected the Board President for the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association. And still to come, we recently had a resignation of a store manager at the Heritage location, and we will be filling that position shortly. We have a huge cooler expansion product at the Kenrick location. We're currently hosting a fundraiser for Yellow Ribbon and the Heritage Center, and updating the liquor department employee manual, hosting Summer Splash, again, one last shameful plug, and coordinating the Heritage Center online benefit auction in October. So if people have items that they would like to donate, they can contact either Brett in the Parks and Rec Department or myself, and if they need to get them out of their garage or out of their house, if that RV is clogging up the driveway, we will accept these kinds of donations at anyone's convenience. They can contact either of us. With that said, in closing, please visit us on Facebook, stop into the stores, feel free, become a Wine Club, Brew Club, or Premier Club member, and you can always email me or visit the website. With that said, are there any questions?
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5C, Parks and Recreation Department Monthly Report. And to give the background information regarding this agenda item is Parks and Recreation Director Brett Altergot.
This is the report for May of 2013. This month at the Art Center, the Lakeville North and Lakeville South, they had their senior art exhibits at the Art Center, and we had a total of 190 people visit those exhibits this year. North was held on May 2nd and South on May 31st. We also had 65 people attend the coffee concert, and it's been pretty average, we're between that 65 to 70 range on our coffee concerts. But the biggest event which was mentioned night was Taste of Lakeville. As a new person in town, I was impressed with the event. Not only did we have a beautiful evening out there, but just the sheer volume of people out there and how they moved, not only on the north and south grounds, but also through the facility. It was a phenomenal event, and I'm looking forward to continue partnership with them. On the park maintenance side, big thing that we did is we fertilized athletic decks. We were able to fertilize 105 of the 125 acres of athletic decks that we have. Mother Nature prevented us from getting all 125 acres. We had three inches of snow in the beginning of the month and another 4.8 inches of rain to deal with, which made it a little bit tricky for us. And along with the fertilization, we also striped 80 athletic fields per week, and that's been a task keeping up on that this year because the grass is growing, it's wet, the paint isn't adhering, so the staff is working diligently to get that done. They had to repair the Orchard Lake Bolt Launch. When the ice came off the lake, it took the concrete slabs and lifted them up and pushed them, rendering the bolt launch essentially useless. So staff had to go out there, take out the slabs, regrade the area, and put them back in. So that's what you're seeing there with the big piece of heavy equipment. And as well as every spring which you'll see on the right hand is playground inspections. We have to perform low-frequency playground inspections, which is your detailed playground inspection. Every nut and bolt, every clamp meticulously go through all of our playgrounds, and it has to be performed by a certified playground safety inspector, of which we have one on staff, and you'll see Mark right there, he's performing one of those inspections. Along with that, we do minimally weekly, but if not daily. Some playgrounds, depending upon age, the frequency during the year has to be increased. But minimally, once per year, you'll see this low frequency, and ones like Land of Amazement, you'll see more often on a low frequency, once a month. Eagle Scouts assisted us with two projects during the month. The horseshoe pit, there were the three volleyball courts at Antlers, we added a fourth sand volleyball court, which you'll see there, and also moved the horseshoe pits and created a new area for those. The horseshoe pits are about 90% complete, they will finish this weekend coming up. So those will be able to be utilized once again. But without assistance from Eagle Scouts, they perform a valuable service for us in assisting in these programs. We have a number of other projects in the works right now, and we're actually looking for additional projects that they can work on. The number of requests is up quite a bit, according to John Hennan. This has been a little bit of a May-June issue. The Lake Marion No-Wake Limits. Number of years ago, I believe it was 1999, we said he worked with the DNR, and we came up with 983.6 feet above sea levels being the no-wake level for Lake Marion. As you can see in this chart, beginning on May 21st, you can see shortly after the ice came off, we took a reading of 982.33. Then we would go about once a week on those. However, the lake level is getting close to the no-wake. So you can see, going into last week, 12th, 13th, 14th, was monitored over the weekend following the rain event on Saturday, and again this morning. We are currently 4.44 inches away from issuing the no-wake. If that goes into effect, there's a process that we have of who's going to be notified, and we'll enact that procedure at that time. The last time that we had to put a no-wake on Lake Marion was July 17th through the 22nd of 2011. In the recreation side, on May 4th, the South of the River Recreators hosted the GPS Amazing Race, Family Race, and that brought in a total, there was 40 teams, but that was 175 participants, so a little over four people per team that were here in Lakeville. The summer leagues got off to a slow start, that's not just us, but that's every athletic group out there, soccer, softball, baseball. Specifically on our end, we took a hit on Wednesday night, it's been picked on. It seems like every Wednesday, we've only been able to get in three of eight games to date. So, and I know Dan has worked hard with the maintenance staff to make sure we can get those fields ready, it just always seems to rain at 4 o'clock on us. But in terms of our teams, we have 19 corec softball, 12 men's softball, and 23 sand volleyball teams. So sand volleyball's been fine, we were able to continue having those leagues. Also on the rec side, we have tiny tots turf soccer, and it's the outdoor one from last summer. We'll go on Ames Arena, and Dan Brett Schneider, a rec supervisor for us, he will be in there running that program. That's for kids four to seven years old, so we'll get a lot of the kids, preschool-age kids, will come in once a week and he'll teach soccer to them. As well as we were able to get in a few of the outdoor nature programs at Ritter. We had 19 for the bird banding, and then between the other nature programs, we had 21 participants. As far as the seniors go, they had 11 new members in May, bringing our total for the year, remember, May is the, May 31st is the end of the senior year. We had 1,036 members, which is, I think, slightly down over last year, but this was also our first year with just the Heritage Center, and there were some price increases and things. So we're very happy with that total, and so far this year, things are looking good. The response has been a lot of membership renewal in the first part, and I'll have those numbers more accurately in the June report. On May 9th, they had an antique appraisal, 80 attended, they did the flower pot luncheon, 30, that's a good attendance for a luncheon. But the most important event that we had was on May 14th, a lifeline screening, we had 70 people attend. And kind of get, didn't want to mess this up, so I made sure I wrote it down, lifeline screening is held, and they offer five different, I'll, I will say, categories that they're looking for. They're doing stroke carotid artery, heart rhythm, abdominal aortic aneurysm, arterial disease, and osteoporosis risk. They're screening for those. A person can be screened for one or more, or they'll offer a package for all five. And we have had individuals in the past that have been encouraged to go seek treatment from their physician, and Linda said that potentially life-saving type thing. So that's why we bring them in. They have a mobile unit and they do it via, you know, using ultrasound technology, but it's one of the most important programs that Linda feels that we offer at the Heritage Center. And then we had music movement musings, which is painting, writing class, and performances by dancers, chorus, and drama clubs. It was just a fun day for everyone to get out of their shell, perform, do something outside of their comfort zone, and they all had a great time. Some projects updates, the batting cage at King Park I mentioned last month, they're about 90% complete at this point, held up out of weather, believe they're trying to get them done by this weekend, there's a baseball tournament coming in, I was out there today, I believe they'll have them done. They look great, it's a great addition to the park, and I want to thank the Baseball Association for that. The irrigation system at the Art Center will finish up this week. It was, began in May, again, we had some weather delays, but on that, it will be operational by the end of this week, and the Heritage Center is up and running as well. And Brenda already mentioned things that we have coming up with the Summer Splash for the Heritage. But so upcoming, we're taking registrations currently through summer programs, camps, all the different things. The Puppet Wagon is, it started performances today, they run through August 9th, and just some things with the big events coming up, Aladdin, which is a prairie friar theater, that's coming up June 21st and 22nd, June 28th to 30th, the Homer Price, that's a children's castle theater, and of course, right as the calendar turns, July 4th through the 14th is Panoprop. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5D, Police Department Monthly Report. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is Chief of Police Tom Von Hoff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I'll be presenting the May 2013 Monthly Report, and every month, we start with our mission statement. In partnership with the community we are, that we serve, we are dedicated to reducing crime, problem-solving, and ensuring the quality of life in Lakeville. And every month, we look at several categories that we select for seeing how we're doing on reducing crimes. We've had no homicides this year, we had four criminal sexual conduct cases reported in May versus one last year. We've had no robberies reported year-to-date, domestic assaults, five versus 10 last year, 22 versus 19 year-to-date, eight other assaults, 24 versus 29 year-to-date, seven burglaries versus eight in 2012, in May of 2012, a total of 34 versus 56 in 2012. Fraud cases, 15 in May and 13 last May, and a total of 75 versus 77 last year. In problem-solving, traffic safety, 42 crashes in May versus 60 in May of 2012, but we are running ahead, 297 versus 262, primarily due to the weather conditions we had in March and April, extraordinary snow events that we had. Speed citations, 60 versus 142 in May of last year, seatbelt violations were also 10 versus 63, DUIs, 16 versus 12 in May of 2012, a total of 81 DUIs and 65 last year. Total traffic stops, 654 versus 1,203, a total of 3,073 year-to-date. If we go on to medical emergencies, in the quality-of-life type calls, 155 versus 116 last May, and we're running ahead there, 645 versus 579 year-to-date. Crisis-related calls, 51 versus 81, and about 100 behind, 272 versus 373 year-to-date. Animal calls, also running behind, 179 versus 206. Suspicion calls, 176 versus 204, and total CAD incidents, those are our total calls, 2,841 versus 3,747, about 12,000, short of 13,000 year-to-date versus about 14,800 last year. In distribution of property crimes, our thefts under $500 at 24%, largest category, traditionally our largest category, but it's interesting that the, our fraud NSF checks and swindle, 20% of our property crimes. Most of those are computer crimes that we're investigating, and we're seeing that's becoming a greater chunk of our property crimes. This is comparison from May of 2012 and May of 2013 for all of our property crimes. There's basically three categories, thefts over 500, fraud, and shoplifting that are greater, all the rest have gone down in comparison. So let's talk a little bit about the street crimes activity. And we picked out just three cases that they worked on, our street crimes unit is made up of two officers that do proactive investigations. The first one involves a case where they received intelligence from our school resource officer, Andy Henches, at Lakeville North High School, we got a student who was suspected of drug dealing marijuana. After some extensive investigation, the street crimes unit secured a probable cause to draft a search warrant, and they went with Dakota County Drug Task Force agents and assisted on the search warrant, which revealed numerous pieces of drug paraphernalia and nearly a felony amount of marijuana. Second case, I'm just kind of showing the difference that they work on, Officer Hyder, Assistant Patrol Call, and I'm going to talk about this call, it's an attempted burglary in progress, where the homeowner actually saw the person trying to break into the daughter's bedroom on the roof of the house, called the police, the person scared away. Officers were able to locate this person, and they did a search warrant at the suspect's residence and made an arrest for first-degree attempted burglary. Finally, destroying a little bit of the range of this, the street crime unit received a call from a parent whose juvenile daughter had been missing for over 24 hours, and the parent was concerned for the daughter's welfare and provided the street crimes officers with some names of some associates, and they were able to locate and return the daughter. Our traffic safety unit, another one of our units, and that is a picture from May 2nd, just the perspective this year, 60 citations, four criminal arrests during May. May brought the end of Officer Adam Steyer's one-year assignment in the traffic unit. We rotate officers through, they compete to actually be in the traffic unit and participate in this, and Officer Steyer really focused on his DUIs, he's been recognized by statewide, by Minnesota MAD organization for his DUI enforcement efforts, and he's going to be replaced this summer by school resource officer Todd Williams, who's coming back to patrol. He'll work in the traffic unit through the summer, and then we'll be appointing a new traffic unit safety officer in September. And this is the burglary arrest I was going to talk about on that Officer Hyder worked on. This is actually the screen, that's the roof right next to it there, that the person was attempting to get into when the homeowner came into the room, startled the attempted burglar, and he fled. The officers were able to locate him and subsequently get a search warrant, located burglary tools and other items there, and he went to jail. He's charged with first-degree attempted burglary, which is the highest degree of burglary. And we're going to see if this works, hopefully it will. This is a MinDOT traffic cam there, we're not on Hamlin Avenue, it's going to switch over to County Road 46 and 35 shortly. Officer Nick Stevens was working on a traffic detail at Wasana Church. On Sunday morning at 10:45, when two people came up and said there's a reckless driver in the area, as he's talking to them, they said it's that car right there, and it came up to his location, he tried to flag them down, the driver went right by him, started pursuing the driver down County Road 46 westbound towards the freeway. Driver turned southbound on the freeway, now you can see the squad right behind the driver there, coming down the freeway, as just coming around the bend here shortly, and you'll see the squad right behind the driver. Driver is going with the traffic, and the officer has had his siren on and lights all the way from Ipeva down 46 to where we're coming up here, this is Highway 50, I believe it's coming up, and you can see the proximity behind the suspect's car there. And this continues on all the way down, and I'll move this ahead a little bit. Now, we're looking south or north on 205th Street here, as they're coming southbound. Now there's additional squads, Officer Swanner is with Officer Stevens at this point in another squad, and squads are holding back additional traffic there. This is County Road 70, and you can see how the, they'll come up on this in a second here, and you see them coming over the hill here with this driver. The driver is traveling at probably highway speeds at this point, and in a few moments, Officer Stevens is going to execute a, what's called a pursuit intervention technique, and the driver slows down to under 30 miles an hour right after they go underneath the bridge here, and he will terminate that pursuit by using this pursuit intervention technique here, and it's going to happen here shortly. Of course, the camera goes out of focus momentarily, but you'll see them come to a stop there. He's able to safely stop that vehicle, the other squads go in and around the vehicle and box it in, and they take the person into custody. Person who prior to them taking into custody was attempting to light up a drug pipe when they stopped. You've seen how his squad is on the inside there, he's just pitted her, and the squads are coming around and boxing the squad, or the fleeing vehicle in, and then they're blocking the other traffic there and taking the person into custody. And like I say, it's not very often that you get to see that, seeing, that is the scene there, right there, you can see that's Officer Stevens' car right next to the suspect's car there. It is a felony to flee, the suspect was charged with multiple felonies in this case, and was taken into custody and stopped, unfortunately, no one else was injured in the situation. But you can see, that's a Sunday morning at 10:45, and this person was under the influence of, suspected to be under the influence of narcotics, and driving so recklessly that citizens were coming up and following the officer to tell them about it. So it was a good job by all the officers in taking this person into custody safely, but you never know when these things are going to happen. Another thing that happened in May is we finally completed our LPD Range mitigation project. If you had been out there before, and this just looks like a little bit of a grade here, there used to be a large cliff there, and then there was an area underneath that, that was completely, the mitigation project's been going on for four years, Sergeant John Cornman was in charge of that. We had a cost split between Dakota County, because the Dakota County Sheriff's Office also shot at that range with us, and we're involved in the mitigation and returning the range to its natural state. And it was a long process to go through, that is MAC, Minnesota Airport Commission property there, South of 225th, right off of Cedar there, so that's all, taking care of it was a good job by Sergeant Cornman in completing that project. You see our new squad there, we had Police Week in, every year Police Week falls in the week that, May 15th falls in that date too, as originally in 1962, President Kennedy designated that to memorialize all police officers who give their life in the line of duty. So on May 18th, we had our open house, you see, we brought our newest squad there. Of course, the sheriff's office brought their newest squad as well. Actually, that's a 1959 Ford sedan, and it is actually, apparently it was one of their squads that they have completely restored on the inside, and I think Sheriff Bellows still uses that one. So we also had our, you can see, we have our Bearcat vehicle there, that's Officer Jim's drone in there explaining to some citizens about the Bearcat, which is an armored vehicle that our SWAT team uses. Of course, LFD Fire Unit was there with one of their pumpers, there's an airboat there, and even though it was a rainy, cold day, we had over 300 people who came through, and a lot of people, it was interesting, were there last year and brought their kids back again this year. And that concludes my report for May 2013, I'll stand for any questions.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number seven, Resolution Approving Aronson-Bluff Preliminary and Final Plaid. And to give the back- And to give the background information regarding this agenda item is City Planner Daryl Morey.
I'm going to throw on the screen, this gives a kind of a step back and gives a little bit wider view of the area, the location of the platte as described by Mr. Israelson, showing the proposed development site outlined in red with Aronson Park. You can see here to the west, County Road 50, Hamburg Avenue. And there's some single-family homes that are on the west side of Hamburg that abut this platte with the Village Creek subdivision to the south. The property is Zoned RS3, which is single-family residential district. And the request is a preliminary and final platte to add 33 single-family lots for development in the city. Just quickly, a couple of the project features, and Mr. Israelson alluded to a couple of those. The temporary cul-de-sac, I think, shows better in this attempt at coloring an exhibit by, on my part. I apologize for the rather crudeness of this. But hopefully it identifies the permanent streets that'll be constructed in the development in the solid orange. The main street being Hampton Avenue, and then two cul-de-sac streets on either side of Hampton. And then the temporary turnaround I put dashed in with this connection to County Road 50. And the reason that this connection is temporary is that County Road 50 currently is a two-lane rural section. The county has restricted access, this is County Road 50, to that roadway. When it's upgraded in the future, it's not currently programmed in our CIP, five-year CIP, but when it is upgraded in the future, it'll be a four-lane divided roadway and as such would be restricted to right-in, right-out access. When we worked with the county in terms of access here and looked at possible options, the only access that the county was comfortable with was a right-in only, not even a right-out, but a right-in only. There was concern that was raised by staff, particularly our police department, regarding the potential safety hazard for folks who might want to breach that right-in-only access and make it a left-out access and the potential hazard that could be caused by that. And it was determined by staff that for public safety purposes, we'd just as soon have this access be only for emergency vehicles. So the access for the public, the residents of this subdivision will be from the south on Hampton. But in the event that there is the need for emergency service personnel to access this neighborhood from County Road 50, there will be a paved access to a temporary, paved temporary turnaround. There will be a gate that will be locked, that will be part of that. And our staff will have the key to that gate, whether it be police, fire, public works, in case they need to access that, again, for emergency or public safety purposes. But until such time as County Road 50 is upgraded to four-lane divided and that can be an effective right-in, right-out, permanent access point, that temporary turnaround would be in place. Also should point out that this development will include a trail access improvement on the south side of County Road 50, connecting Hamburg Avenue to, there's a wooden bridge at the Aronson Park location on the west side of this platte. There is a trail right now. It's kind of a old asphalt, not real good shape, kind of dirt trail. That'll be upgraded to an eight-foot standard city asphalt trailway that will connect Hamburg to Aronson Park. There will be, as you can see slightly here in the lighter green, the Buffer Yard Birmingham Landscaping, adjacent to County Road 50 as required by the ordinance. There is wetland and ponding area that will be within Outlot A that will be deeded to the city. And also there, as part of Outlot A, there's going to be a land swap that's proposed in order to be able to get usable area to make Lot 17, Block 1, a, meet the ordinance standards and be a complete lot. The developers proposed a land swap with the city to gain a triangular portion over here that's part of the Aronson Park property that's not currently being actively used to add that to Lot 17. And they would give to the city, or swap to the city, an equal amount of land that would be within Outlot A, that would be adjacent and provide a buffer between this ball field and the two proposed lots off the cul-de-sac streets, Lots 11 and 12, Block 1. So that'll be part of this and that detail is outlined in the development contract. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the preliminary and final platte at their May 23 meeting. There was actually public comment from five residents representing four of the adjacent households in the homes fronting on Hamburg Avenue, as identified previously on the aerial photography. They had expressed concerns mainly about existing Hamburg Avenue. Traffic levels on Hamburg, the speeds on Hamburg, truck traffic on Hamburg, timing for the future upgrade, current maintenance, and these types of things. Trail, as well as the trail connection to Aronson Park, and then proposed grading and drainage within the Aronson Bluff platte. The questions that were raised by the, and concerns raised by the residents were addressed by staff and the developer at the Planning Commission public hearing. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary and final platte. There was one abstention. The Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Committee also recommend approval of the preliminary and final platte. And as such, staff is recommending City Council adopt the resolution that's in your packet that would approve the Aronson Bluff preliminary and final platte. And I can stand for questions.
Item number seven was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Next highlighted item on the agenda was item number eight, Resolution Approving Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan. And to present the information regarding this agenda item is City Administrator Steve Milkie.
Mayor, members of the council, the action before you on this item is a resolution which amends our Position, Classification, and Pay Plan. The Position, Classification, and Pay Plan is a document that outlines all of the positions that we have in the city. It lays out the wage ranges for those positions and does so in a way that meets the requirements for pay equity. In other words, we have to look at all of our positions and compare them to each other as well as to the outside sectors and make sure that our positions are being paid in an equitable fashion based upon the work that they're doing. Staff was directed to complete a market study of all of our positions. That was accomplished in-house. And we looked at all of our non-union positions. Union positions are, of course, bargained. But we looked at our non-union positions and compared them against both comparable cities as well as looked at a private sector survey data as well. After looking at that, we did find some positions that we recommend to the Personnel Committee be considered for alterations in their pay ranges. There are six positions, all of them in our middle ranges of positions, either as managers or coordinators. There are some specialist positions as well. The modifications are relatively modest. If the council adopts the six position changes, our general fund will be impacted by $4,625 in 2013. Our other funds, which are liquor, utilities, and environmental resources, all together, the changes would equal just $12,399. I didn't go through the positions, but let me just outline them. There's a benefits specialist position, our liquor store managers, there are three of those positions. Our liquor administrative services manager position, our public works analyst and safety coordinator position, environmental resources manager and GIS supervisor. So all of those positions were considered. There were a number of other positions which were not recommended for change, although they were reviewed at times.
Item number eight was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the items presented to the council at their June 17th, 2013 meeting. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall. The number is 952-985-4400. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up.